Okie dokie, are we ready? I'm gonna head up. Alright, just had to do that. We found it, didn't. We found it. Are we ready? I'm gonna head up. Alright, we had to do that. We found it, didn't. That is way delayed. There we go. Alright, so I called this regular meeting of the Red Oak City Council to order Monday, November 4th at 5:30 here at the Red Oak Fire Station. Just to note that this is being recorded and now they're available on our YouTube channel. And the entire packet is now posted on our city website. Number two invocation by Pastor Dan Wetzel is Dan online. With Faith Community Church. It was here last time. Alright, number three pledge of allegiance when we all stand and John, would you lead us with the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Ashley?
Bradley, here. Bill?
Here.
Brynall?
Here.
Heitzick?
Present.
Heebrich?
Here.
Number five approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Bradley?
Second.
Heitzick? Roll call.
Bill?
Yes.
Brynall?
Yes.
Heitzick?
Yes.
Heebrich?
Yes.
Number six is proclamations and special notices. I'm sorry, did we miss Bradley? There we go. Thank you. Alright, now number six is proclamations and special notices and I don't believe we have anything for that tonight. Number seven is the swearing in of our new city clerk Ashley Wilson, which we should have done last time, but we'll do today. So we'll do that over here. Where would you like us?
Probably out there and then face each other. We'll be sideways.
Hi Ashley Wilson. Hi Ashley Wilson, do someone please swear?
Do someone please swear?
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
The laws of the city of Red Oak.
The laws of the city of Red Oak.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of the city clerk.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of city clerk.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law. Yes, so I, I am really, really excited and very privileged in that I was elected to this wonderful opportunity, not only to work with wonderful individuals of the council, individuals of city hall and the departments, but then also to serve individuals of the community of Red Oak, so thank you. Right, well, we're excited to have you. So thank you. Great, and we will sign her documentation. Let me get back to City Hall. Number eight, public comments. We do have a two-minute limit and you must sign in at the front door to speak. Nothing, anything online. Nope, nothing online, okay. Number nine is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the city council on October 21st of 24, the library board minutes of October 14th, 24, the downtown urban renewal board on September 11th of 24, and then liquor licenses for five-day Red Oak Lodge Elks Club 1304, November 7th through the 11th of 2024.
I move to approve.
Second.
Brynall? And Heitzick? Roll call.
Brynall?
Yes.
Heitzick?
Yes.
Heebrich?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Alright, the November 4th, 2024 city claims to be paid in the amount of $90,350.47 and the utility deposit refund of $624.88.
Move to approve.
Bills?
Second.
Bradley? Did anyone have any discussion? Roll call.
Heitzick?
Yes.
Heebrich?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes. Bill?
Yes.
Brynall?
Yes.
Alright, number 11. This is ordinance number 638, the cemetery management, chapter 115 ordinance. This is the third and final reading. Again, this is basically updating our code of ordinances to say a quarterly report as opposed to a monthly report to state that the superintendent of the cemetery reports to the city administrator instead of to the city council. And it delegates, the superintendent has the delegation of authority or the authority to delegate attendance of funerals, so he is not required to be at every funeral that he has, he has currently been doing, so. I'm trying to think, and then it also took, it removes the park position activities that were originally in this particular ordinance. However, they all work cooperatively together, so those are basically the four main pieces of that. And this is again, the third and final reading.
I'll move to approve.
Bills?
Second.
Brynall?
And I'd like to also add, you know, this came to our attention a while back and it's taken us a while to get it, and Brad, thank you so much for being patient with us to get this done and, and I for one, and I'm sure I speak for everyone else here, thank you so much.
Yes, absolutely. Our park, our cemetery looks absolutely fantastic and all the areas that you mow and maintain, so appreciate it.
I still agree, we need to prohibit weekend funerals so that we give these guys an actual day off instead of working seven days a week.
Okay, that's noted.
We'll be, Brad and I will be reviewing the rules and regulations of the cemetery and then we'll bring that forward if there's any recommended changes.
Okay. Alright, thank you, noted. Alright, take a motion.
Got it.
Alright, so we have first and second. Roll call.
Heebrich?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Brynall?
Yes.
Number six.
Yes.
Number 12. Ordinance number 639, this is our floodplain management and this is the second of three readings. Basically, this is based after some changes that the Iowa DNR and the Corps of Engineers have shared with Lisa that we needed to make just to update our ordinances. It also adds the word subdivisions, which accounts for mobile home parks. Is there anything else I'm missing there, Lisa?
No, but just sort of further clarifies the types of things that would be required when a building permit is issued within the floodplain. Our rules say you have to be a one foot above the 100-year floodplain. And so it's further clarifying the types of things that would be included, which is a lot of the HVAC mechanical type things that were not specifically listed before. So that was one of the requirements. Just to make sure that people understand what the expectation is.
So that's finished floor and any mechanical items have to be one foot above 100-year floodplain.
Correct. This is the second of three readings. Yes. We don't need a motion to approve. I'm wishing to approve the second reading of the ordinance for the floodplain management.
Okay, Bradley?
Second.
Heitzick? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brynall?
Yes.
Heitzick?
Yes.
Heebrich?
Yes.
Number 13, resolution 2024-66 to purchase, purchase a 2012 bucket truck for $35,000.
So I have Brad and Chris both here, who would be two of the departments that would be one of the heavier users of it. We currently have a bucket truck that is not certified in terms of the bucket, which is the safety component of going up in the air in the bucket. So we have very limited use on it. So if the council were to make this purchase, approve this purchase, we would like to recommend selling it. That may mean that someone that purchased it kind of retrofits it into not being a bucket. But obviously, we'd say that it's sold as is and be clear that it's not a certified bucket. So the $35,000, Brad was the one that, you guys can come up if you want and answer any questions. So Brad was the one that found it from the Wilson Company that showed it to us. They were gracious enough to let the guys demo it for the last week or so, so we had all the department heads come up there. We've had it, really been able to actually use it. I think to take down a couple of small things, I think Chris used it the other day to get up on something. And so what I thought was important from our perspective was that we spent a significant amount of money on tree removal. So I just went back to one of the companies, the main company that we use. Didn't even go back to some of the other ones that we hire occasionally. But in the last two calendar years, not fiscal years, we have spent over $90,000 hiring trees to be removed. And so while I don't want the council to think that this means we'll never hire anybody because this bucket is not, it's only 42 feet tall, it's not high enough to get all the way up.
How many feet did you say?
Forty-two. And so there's certainly trees that'll have to be topped by other people. And some of them are just too big or kind of the space that they need, we would want someone that does that on a more regular basis. So let's just say at the $90,000, even if we were to cut in the next two years a third of those hirings, we would have in two years paid for this truck. And obviously, there's additional purposes that maybe the guys can explain that we think we can use it for, but I think it's a good investment. And in the proposal, in the packet on page 25, I explained that we would have a $10,000 coming from cemetery equipment, $10,000 from street, and then five each from water sewer and parks.
So when you say the Wilson Company, is this, am I saying green tree? Yeah, okay, and, and so this, does this truck reach similar heights as the one we're getting rid of?
Taller.
It's more.
Taller, 35 to 42.
Yeah, and, and so I guess my other question is, I'm, I'm all for the purchase by the way, but my, my question to you guys is selling this old bucket truck, does that open us up for any exposure?
No, it's as is, like she said, well, put on auctions, like, just sold it.
Certainly wouldn't want to be liable for anybody getting injured with that thing on.
Though this one has a lot of miles on it though.
It does.
So what do you think is the lifetime of this bucket versus?
So there's, there's two things to look at. There's the 211,000 miles that's being referenced was driving two jobs, obviously. The bucket itself has 2,300 hours on it, so a lot less hour usage versus the miles that it's got on. So it was driving, you know, if it was based in Missouri, it was driving to Nebraska. Obviously, us in this small confined area, definitely meet at the cemetery, but even when we go out and out, the mile thing, I don't think, you know, those power-stroke diesels, I, I think we could beat, beat it to no end.
Mechanical wise, everything.
It's, it's been fully went through certification clause or, you know, check out with the company we're getting, that Scott got it from.
What's a new bucket like?
Clint, Clint made a couple of calls when he came up and looked at it and depending on things, you know, this truck with the years of mileage was probably a 50,000 to 60,000 out on the market type of new was quarter of a million dollars depending on how it was equipped, so. It's the equipment of it, it's not the truck that gets you, it's the this has got Altech boom, which is widely known with cities and railroads and tree trimmers and it's the guy that has it and is working it, he's done all the certification maintenance on it, is an Altech guy. So, you know, it's pretty good. Ronnie's been up about maybe 20-plus hours in the last two weeks. We worked this morning with it. We are taking advantage of 8th Street being shut down, doing the big denoks on up and down 8th Street there, so. You know, it, it's got a feature with downriggers which we've never experienced before, so.
And so will it be housed?
Probably down at the street bar.
Street where I can be in front of room.
We, we just, our shop back together and everything, it'll be housed inside. Because you like to keep more of the warmth and the hydraulic oil in case you have something in the warehouse.
And Sharon, you know, I think this, the 550 series, pretty heavy-duty stuff.
So our staff recommendation is to go ahead to approve the $35,000 purchase. And then the section act, second action item would be to approve the declaration of the old truck being declared a surplus so that we as staff can go and sell that one.
We do that with one and we have to do that separate.
You can do it with one for both.
So it's resolution, just resolution.
Well, I'll move to, I'll move to make the purchase of the 2012 truck and also to declare the 87 bucket truck is surplus.
One second.
Okay, Bills and Brynall? Need further discussion?
Well, I think it's time to upgrade, I mean, the one's 1987. It's time. And if, if, we can't even upgrade the bucket on that either, can we?
No, we went through a couple of years ago and did all the hydraulic lines and the return on the lines is what the problem is. You know, it's, there's so many. Everything's just tired. I mean, there's so many connections to try and make all the arms and.
It's probably a different generation of equipment too. I mean, the new is probably like electronic controls and the other one was old hydraulic controls, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's got, you know, some extra features and it wasn't the best day when we kind of did our little, you know, snoop session on it, but I mean, it's got some features that you can get up to a tree and curve the bucket around and you know, just some things that we really can utilize.
So safer.
It is.
Just a lot safer, and that's the big thing. Thirty-three guys be up in the air and the hydraulic goes out and that thing comes down.
That was at the point where it wasn't safe to put anybody in.
That's, that's when we chose to shut it down.
And what did you use it for the other day? Or this?
Take a hanger-lam on Halloween day. I got a phone call from one of my guys and said, uh, up on Kubo, there was a, we call them hanger-lams, a rock-off lam high in the, so I called Ronnie, he got right up there and that was perfect, you know, so.
Did I miss something in here or there, is there, do we have some kind of expectation when we get out of our, our old truck?
Yeah, no, I don't think we'll sit on there.
Is there any way we can repurpose it for something else?
No, really. I, I think we, you know, you never know, which you might be surprised, it might break more where we think it'll work, so you never know.
Yeah, a lot of that stuff goes offshore these days.
We talked, as far as internally, we could water, wastewater, could use it like for a trash pump truck, you know, set up and, and just go take all, everything off, but Clint, by the time he got everything done.
Too much.
More than the truck's worth, yeah.
Any questions for these, John? Okay, just to clarify, the motion is to approve both number 13 and 14 for resolution 2024-66 to purchase the 2012 bucket truck for 35,000 and resolution 2024-70 to declare the 1987 Ford 600 bucket truck a surplus and to get the best price we can. I, I actually have a, a motion and a second. I just wanted to reread it to clarify. Roll call. Thanks, John. Bills?
Yes.
Brynall?
Yes.
Heitzick?
Yes.
Heebrich?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number 15 is resolution 2024-67. This is to amend our residential inspection rental fees for substantial remodel or new construction. This is basically came out of the concept of the 1917 lofts. Since they are going through a full building permit process and, and being approved by SWIPCO, it seemed like repetition to charge them the full price for each unit. And so the resolution is stated. Lisa, would you like to share anything there?
Yeah, it just seemed like, you know, we want to obviously collect, want to collect back the fees that it costs us. But from an economy of scales perspective, SWIPCO is already going to be there doing an inspection for occupancy. Another example would be the Woodland Hills, so that'll be new construction. All those townhomes will be rentals. If we have a building inspector there doing a certificate of occupancy and then to turn around and charge another $100 per unit, that's, they can do a lot of it. So I think there needs to be a fair increase because there will have to be a few extra things that they would look at from a rental perspective that are not necessarily what they look at from just a single-family owner occupied resident property. We obviously want to make sure that, that either new construction or when I said substantial, it would mean that it isn't just somebody doing something minor, that they are there and doing a full occupancy inspection and that was, that's what will qualify you. Also clarified in there that that's a one-time lesser fee, you know, you don't stay in that forever. So in three years when you're re-upping and now somebody isn't there, you go back to the regular fees. And then kind of put a few other stipulations that the only way that that happens is to make sure that you've registered and paid for your rental fees prior to at least 10 days, I said in there, prior to the actual certificate of occupancy meeting so that it isn't, again, we're paying SWIPCO to go back a second time. If you're late, then you pay the regular fee. But if you can do it in a timely fashion, that Phil and Matthew can do it at the same time. I also sent this to SWIPCO to make sure that they were comfortable with it and they concur that this was a reasonable, you know, it's, it's bureaucratic and just double the fees, you know, or charge them for two things because we can't be in logical.
How do you determine and how do you define substantial?
That you're having a complete walkthrough of occupancy. So if you just do a small concrete pad, if you're doing a fence, not, it's on a building permit, it's something that's going to require them to give you a certificate of occupancy. So that's how we define you, you're getting, and SWIPCO said the same thing and then when they said if I'm, if we need staff, SWIPCO are giving you a certificate of occupancy, you've done a remodeling, that that qualifies.
I, I guess so, my question is then, at what point does SWIPCO require a CO for a remodel? At what point of a remodel, I mean, is it a kitchen, is it a bathroom, is it a paint job? What is it?
$10,000 and higher, right?
$10,000 and higher requires an inspection.
Yeah.
I see, well, that's not much these days.
We'll probably have to look at that as a part of our recodification. I, I would think that we'll do it less on value than what you're doing. Tends to be, because right now it's super confusing how we even calculate our fees. Seems like you need a algorithm, mathematic degree.
Yes.
So then what's inefficient, like I would like to see us be, you know, a list of things so that as someone comes in to get a permit, staff can actually just calculate it right there and people pay, because what we have is people are coming in, thank you for coming in, we'll get back to you, and then people don't get back, you know, we may get back to people, but then we have to get them to come back a second time. So I'd like to see more online as well, like that would be my goal, is that people can pay building permits, pet stuff, whatever they can get online.
Are fees in line with other facilities?
I honestly don't know that, but I think SWIPCO would have told us if not. And again, it's not so much, you know, there's a small amount that we charge over when you look at like our administrative time, but the vast majority of this is just covering our costs that we actually pay to SWIPCO.
And, and you know, and, and we don't really, as, I'm simply speaking for myself, but it seems like we don't really want to make money on housing, we want to encourage it and subsidize it how we can.
And ultimately, the goal is to make sure our housing stock is safe.
Yeah.
And well taken care of and maintained, that's the whole idea here, is really compliance to keep everything safe and up to code.
The other thing that I put in here was SWIPCO brought to my attention that say, uh, we're going to do a three-year cycle. So the kind of plan is in January, we would send out letters from city hall. It would say you have to pay your fee and get this done by the end of March. And then Bill is scheduling those in April and then doing the vast majority of the inspections, like May, June, July, so that people have the end of summer and the fall to get their improvements made. So what they found was happening is that if you don't get your inspection until June and then you take till October to get your certificate of occupancy and get your work done, then people think that the three-year starts in October. But you still need, you only then get technically two and a half years, because three years from the January that we sent out your letter, that's when you expire. And so they felt like people were misconstruing that and saying, oh, good, now I have three years. And then by the time they start again, they're almost at four years. And so I wanted to make sure that this was clear in here, that we can come back to this policy if anybody questions that to make it clear. So the recommendation would be to make that adjustment as we're approaching somewhere, this would be a relevant alteration to the current policy that you adopted, I think in August or September.
So in municipalities that I've been involved with in the past, one of the determinations that they used for inspection requirements was whether or not the repairs were structural or not. And, and I don't see that anywhere here. Seems like that.
Well, because right now, all you have to do is have $10,000 and then we come out. So we don't need to do that until we change the code. So we may have to tweak this once we decide how we want to determine what requires inspection.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is even if the repair was only $5,000, but if it was a structural repair, then it would.
Well, the way the code is right now, you're charging people $10 for that. Well, no, sorry, it might be like $50. We definitely have to look at those, again, not because, I mean, just for my time to like review the simplest of permits costs us $10.
You're changing the dates to include the year instead of middle of the year.
No, yeah, definitely.
And we'll make sure it's clear in the letter. You know, the sooner that you get this done.
It's going to be complicated.
Or later, it doesn't. You're not extending your time when you have to pay the next. But to your point, Brian, if we decide to alter our expectations of inspections, then I think we'll also make sure that we look at that this correlates to whatever changes we make when we make them, but right now.
Are we talking like foundation, like let's say a house?
Well, anything structural, I think it bears a load, basically. It's a load-bearing wall, it's structural, if it's.
I mean, we have a lot of rentals that, you know, have some really bad foundations on there.
Well, and that's, I guess that's what brought it all to mind because in the past, we never really followed any of that stuff and there's a lot of, you know, there was a lot of stuff done out there without permits and.
I think we always, whatever new rules we have, we need to give me as the zoning administrator and or SWIPCO as the building code official, that if we think it needs to be inspected, we have the right to end them.
Yes, I would agree.
Substantial could be a real wide area or amount, ten.
Again, the key right now is just if they're already there looking. And anything that's over $10,000 that are going to be looking. And if I really had concerns, I'll make sure we cover it.
Okay. Take a motion?
A motion to approve, to amend the residential inspection rental fees.
Okay, Bradley?
One second.
Brynall? Any further discussion? Roll call. Brynall?
Yes.
Heitzick?
Yes.
Heebrich?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Number 16 is resolution 2024-68 to declare the 2017 Dodge Charger as surplus. This is the current city hall car. And it looks like the police department will be soon retiring a 2019 Dodge Charger out of their fleet. And so basically, we're looking to replace the car available for city staff. But we do need to declare this one surplus.
So the car that's available at, for all city staff, is it?
It would be available for you as well.
For anybody that has business inside the city, outside the city, how does that work?
Yes. For cities.
Mostly at city hall, but if you were going to the league conference and you wanted to take it and it was available, there's a sign out sheet. In the case of city hall, probably use it, doesn't use it a lot. Sometimes law enforcement officers who are going to the academy have taken it.
That's where it's been.
Officers.
How's that work with our insurance, car insurance?
As long as you're authorized, as long as you're authorized to drive a vehicle, it's your.
But you signed a waiver when you were first elected.
Yeah, you had to give up your driver's license.
Have we had a city card for use like that in the past?
Yes.
We have a, 17 is the one that's there right now.
Okay.
So basically, instead of saying the one that the police department doesn't need is getting sold, we just always, a lot of cities do that, they just cycle out the oldest one and keep the newer ones.
Okay.
Pass them down.
We're going to replace this with a 19, sell this one.
Exactly.
And, um, I don't think the chief is in here, but he was going up to the dealership to see what they were going to give us as a trade-in. So it could be that, if we feel like that's the highest price, otherwise we'll try to sell it. Alright, again, as is, whatever you got, you get. Our recommendation is, again, the resolution would authorize the sale of the 17.
My thing is, if we're already doing auctions with other vehicles, why don't we just go with an auction? Because sometimes we don't get a very good. why don't we just go with an auction? Because sometimes we don't get a very good trade-in value. I, I would, I would rather we go through an auction, if we're already have a bucket truck going to an auction site, why don't we just keep going with an auction site instead of trying to do a trade-in here? We never get, never, I mean, we, we like to do good business, but a lot of times we don't get the true trade-in value that we could just I'm saying roll the dice at an auction that we could possibly get.
No, we just do a sealed bid on the stuff.
Sometimes like, yeah, like for the fire truck and the ambulance, we're starting with sealed bids at City Hall, so there's no.
I, I like to see us use like a site like Purple Wave, that's a online auction site.
You gotta, but you gotta pay them a percentage too, it's not very.
That's true.
Sometimes it goes up, but the thing to remember is if we thought we got lowballed by anybody, we can always reject them all and then send it off to the auction.
Yeah, and we could also set a, a certain value that we like to see a reserve.
We'll be, we'll be lucky to get much of anything out of a twenty seventeen police car that's never been turned off since the day it was purchased.
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
But it does have all-wheel drive, make a great winter car for somebody.
Yeah, we'll do the best we can, but we, we weren't necessarily suggesting a trade-in, all that the chief just went to add.
Sure.
We thought we'd probably do better.
That's a good, that's a good starting point. I mean, I just think if we're going to it with auctions or whatever.
This still has the, the hard seat in the back too, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
We figured if the, whatever the trade-in is, we'll set that as the minimum.
Yeah.
Then we know, we're not getting any less.
Yep.
Always good.
And if we get more, we get more, sometimes people. I get deeper to mine.
Would entertain a motion?
Show move.
Isaac?
I'll second.
And Bills? Any further discussion? Roll call. Isaac?
Yes.
Hebring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Righto.
Yes.
All right, number seventeen, a resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-nine. This is the approval of basically the social service agreements with both the Red Oak Chamber and Industry for twenty thousand dollars and Montgomery County Development Corporation for fifteen thousand. And basically, this resolution is approving the resolution that sets those amounts, which also supports the agreements that are behind that documents.
So the twenty thousand for the Chamber, that's our normal amount?
We had been giving ten.
Ten.
With five for the ca-, uh, Chamber bucks, and we upped it to twenty.
Okay, and we're cutting the, the MCDC by fifty percent?
I believe so.
Are these different than twenty-four, fiscal twenty-four?
Yes.
But this is definitely what was budgeted.
This is what was asked.
Well, I know that the conversation we were going to have was if we were going to supplement the other half of that for MCDC with franchise fees. And I mean, that's something we didn't really settle on yet, so maybe that could be revisited in the future.
I think better to make sure that the amount we know we're going to get is based on fact, but not what they ask.
Part of the reason we arrived at this amount is because this is the same amount that the county is going to contribute to the MCDC as well.
Well, they already have done that.
Yeah, they were, they were doing the thirty thousand and then they cut it to fifteen, so that's, that's why we rhymed it at fifteen.
Did Steve get back with you on some of the, just a few language changes on that that we were looking at?
No, and I know Elaine is, uh, wasn't able to at time, but she is online. So if we have any.
I want to start with.
Do you have, did you talk about them at your meeting?
We, well, we did, we kind of emailed back and forth a little bit, and I could tell you what those are, it's nothing major.
Go ahead.
Um, so in C.
Page thirty-six of the package.
Yes, um.
This is part of the agreement.
Yes.
Where we spelled out deliverables.
Correct. Uh, where it says MCDC will participate in training to strengthen businesses and support efforts to establish and nurture an entrepreneurial ecosystem and potential incubator space. We just want to change it a little bit to MCDC will partner in training and strengthening businesses and supporting efforts to establish and nurture an entrepreneur, entrepreneurial ecosystem and strike out potential incubator space from that. And that's nothing that we've really ever talked about as an organization, so we don't want to have it in there as a deliverable and not deliver on it if we've never discussed doing it. We wanted to take out, or, yeah, let's see. Down toward the bottom that Montgomery County Development Corporation will participate in career and job fair events, providing the benefits and job opportunities with Red Oak and employers. Take that section out. Job fairs are typically done by the employers anymore. Um, again, if it's something that we feel is beneficial to the community, I'm sure it's something that we would perform. But again, having it as a requirement, we didn't think that would be good to have in there.
Elaine kind of brought that up too, that we're not doing that, so.
It's, yeah, so just.
We could probably take them out for both, and then again, I think we have faith that if, if there's an appropriate place for both, there's to be, they'll be there.
And then just the last line to take out where it says MCDC will use the City of Red Oaks logo on appropriate marketing, advertising, and event marketing materials. MCDC has their own logo, so I'm not sure what the need would be to use the City of Red Oaks logo on anything.
Just to identify the contributor.
But that would be, but that's would be included in a benefit, a partner package. Using, you know, the logo on, as a partner or supporter, but using it in general just for.
I think just for partnerships, like when we did the downtown assessment and I did the Facebook post, I put the city, the chamber.
Yeah.
MCDC and then the IDA.
That part, that's, that is actually going to be spelled out in the partner packages that we have anyway. So it's kind of a moot point to stick it in here, and then it's going to be on the other anyway, so we'll use it. It just, to me, it didn't, we didn't think it needed to be in here specifically, since it's outlined in the packages that contributors make, that that makes sense.
I got a question, does MCDC a couple times a year try to do job fairs?
So I was actually going to clarify what that actually meant, and maybe I should have used the term college career fairs. That was, the idea there was that we would be present at out, external events where students are looking for jobs, representing our employers. That's what that was actually meant to be, to state.
I would think, again, like we have to make sure that that's something that goes into valid information.
Yeah, and, and a need for, so.
I'm just used to doing it as an economic developer.
I just think that since COVID, fairs are different now, and that a lot of employers are just having their own fairs. But I think we just clarify for both groups that if they, um, if there is stuff we want them to go to.
Well, you think, you think you'd limit yourself to your own, having your, uh, businesses doing their own job fair, instead of having a hosting, be a part of a host of a big one where you could actually get multiple, multiple people in there. Uh, which would bring greater people into apply for jobs.
I'll be surprised if colleges are no longer doing job fairs, because that's how they get those big contributors on their campus.
Right.
And that's how students go with their resumes, booth to booth, to meet those employers. Um, and so my thought was, um, economic development's usually present, representing the jobs that their current employers have.
Correct.
And then the Chamber could provide materials that support that for Red Oak, like what is benefits of living in Red Oak type stuff. So that was.
Let's just hope that, let's just be assured that if there's a relevant place for them to be, that they'll be there and then maybe just not having it in here, because if somebody comes along and there's a new group of elected officials, and all of a sudden somebody has a different expectation, and they say, well, now you're not going to get the money, could you?
She didn't do the job fair.
Right, and which one do you pick then?
I got you, yeah.
I, I don't think if.
Yeah, I'm not saying that MCDC would refuse to do one, it's just having it in here, I didn't feel it was necessary, because again, the way that they're done now is, it's just different.
Yeah.
The other thing that, I know Mary, you said Chamber bucks, it's cold cash, which is the Christmas money, and it does refer to that on page thirty-nine, but just so if anybody's wondering.
Do they change names to the different seasons of the year, like?
No.
Well, they only go once.
Just for the. Otherwise, it's just, uh, yeah. Just has a whole rush, name those Chamber divers or.
Yeah, it's only good with January, it is.
Thanks.
It's cold cash, yeah, you get the eighty, pay eighty dollars for a hundred dollars yesterday.
And you can buy Chamber bucks throughout the year. A lot of our employers buy those for their employees as, um, you know, bonuses or perks or whatever.
So if Elaine is online.
Doesn't have anything unless.
She doesn't have anything.
Questions, I asked her if she wanted to speak, she said not, and I said, just bring them.
All right. So we'll make those changes to the MCDC ones. If this resolution.
And then we're gonna take the same sentence out of the job fairs and then we'll just, because Elaine did bring that up too. But mainly, people are having their own. And I, she, she said the same thing, that if, if there's something relevant for them to go to, that they'll purchase.
So as the economic developer in Lincoln, I attended job fairs on campuses of military campuses and, and I represented the job employers of Lincoln, Nebraska. So rather than having Eaton Corporation there, I represented the Chamber businesses that were looking for. So that was part of my role as an economic developer and trying to recruit people. We also held an event where we invited those individuals that expressed some interest in our Lincoln jobs. We brought them in and had an overnight event, we had a bus that we took them to take tours of each individual corporation, and they even conducted interviews. So that's the direction people are going with job recruitment in today's world.
Was that before?
It was in twenty sixteen, I will say.
It was.
But I did do, I hosted a job fair and a career fair here twice a year, entire time I was with MCDC. So.
So it's up to the council if you want to require them to do that, or if you're willing to take it out. And not, I don't think anybody's saying to take it out to say, we're never going to do that, it's just that people feel like it's a little bit different. Post-COVID, and, and when Elaine talked to me about it, she said it was because employers are often wanting to host their own.
In South West Community Colleges, through all.
But is that on the Crescent campus or is that here?
Well, I don't know if they've done one here lately or not, have they?
They haven't, as far as I know.
You know, and, and ministry.
I used to do it with Katie Little.
Yeah, it's up at the college, so that can be looked into.
Well, I think the key is just like, we want that to come from the businesses, like if the Chamber and MCDC can add value to their members, that's what's appropriate, and they have to be on board with, this is a good way to represent their company, and that if there's nothing to represent, like they don't give us stuff, then there's nothing to go to, so we can certainly reach out and make sure if, if it's valid. I don't see either group not doing.
Yep.
So you can minimize and agree.
Yes, you guys, whatever you think, if you want to require legal, then you keep it in, if you're willing to say that Tim's recommendation that they will be taken out and that we encourage appropriate participation where it can be advantageous to Red Oak, but not a requirement of the money. I guess is the key.
Yeah.
So you should decide before whoever makes the motion is in or out.
I would make the motion to approve the social security, social service agreements with Red Oak Chamber and Industry uh, as amended and discussed with, as Tim Riddell pointed out, to remove the, um, job fair, job fairs.
Did you include MCDC in that motion too?
Yes, I'll include MCDC in that.
All right, Bradley?
I'll second.
Bills? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hebring?
Yes, yeah.
Bradley?
Yes. Bills?
Yes.
Righto.
I'm abstained. Yes.
Okay, number eighteen, discussion on the recodification of ordinances, chapters one through twenty-five. And I will note, this does include mayor, council, and some staff positions. Are you wanting us to go through each of these, Lisa, or?
I mean, I don't think that we want.
Or is the discussion to, to kind of tell us what you would like us to do with these first twenty-five chapters? How to bring that back to you?
Page by page. I mean, one of them is, you know, you can say, once we get in the cycle, obviously, goal would be like now chapter's twenty-six and whatever the next chunk is, I'll see if Justin from the firm can get it sooner, so you have it ahead of time. Um, his basic thing is that he's at least going to ask us to address the questions that are in here. If you'd rather have me put them all on here and you give me the input you want, and then we deal with it as staff, you know, some of it is obviously policy that you need to give us. Let's just pick, yeah, we're not going through every chapter.
I was going to say, my thoughts would be, have, uh, if people have thoughts on each one, should they get those changes or edits to you?
That makes sense.
Um.
I'm sorry, would you read that?
I'm saying if we go through them on our own and make any edits or changes, or just even like a question mark, if there's something that you're questioning, that maybe it could either be further defined, more clearly defined, more enforceably defined, um, if there's a recommendation that the council would make for anything.
I think one thing we should probably talk about is whether you want me to pursue legal counsel's opinion on what I put in here, which was, it has been brought up whether or not the mayor's term should be a four-year term instead of a two-year term, which many cities have. And whether you want to eliminate the wards.
Oh, yeah.
And have all at large as it becomes more and more challenging to.
Don't you do that, we should show these questions to see if there's something that we should address before.
Yeah, I don't see why we need to consult an attorney on this, but perhaps.
Yeah, because some stuff is referendum and some stuff is.
Oh, I see, as to how we approach it, not as to whether or not we can do it.
Right, you can do it. Right, if you read what I put in here from.
So, yes.
Justin, who is our consultant. Um, his opinion is that one of them could be done by a vote of the council and one would have to go to a referendum, which was the mayor's term would have to be facilitated by, facilitated by a referendum, and that changing from the wards, if you look at the one code, um, it references if you currently have at-large versus ward, um, it talks about that, but I would want to make sure, and he suggests like we would have to talk to our legal counsel, so the point is, there's no point in talking about it if no one's interested in talking about it.
Well, I'm interested in talking about it, but what, what's the, what's the downside to that? Which one of, of having everybody at large?
Everybody's from one little neighborhood, but when you're a small town, that doesn't really have, like, you know, I don't know where everybody lives yet, but if you live in the newer part versus where I live in the central part, do you really feel like you value things differently, that you're only representing your people that, you know, in big urban areas where there gen, there really are unique issues to different neighborhoods, but I think in most small towns, I don't think any of you look at things differently.
I mean, I think a case in point of this, and even before, uh, just this last election where you guys came on board, there was three of us from Ward One on the council, and I don't believe any of us favored our ward over any other one. Uh, you know, I was Ward One, but I was at large, Janice was, uh, at large, but she's in Ward One, and then we had Scott Keith, who actually represented Ward One. But again, I, I don't think any of us, I'm not trying to speak for anybody, but I don't think any of us uh, looked at any of those issues to benefit our little neck of the woods, um, by any stretch of the means. And again, with the size of Red Oak and given, obviously, the struggle of, of getting people to fill the seats. If I wouldn't have ran, it would have been an open seat at that time, because I did run on a post. Um, and that was at not large, so anybody could have ran for that, but they didn't. Uh, and that's why I thought it would be something to do, and I just took note of it after Cory did it. Um, they moved all their seats to that large seats.
I think the key is just super challenging.
Sorry.
It's super challenging to ask, to have, to find people that want to step up and be elected officials. It's obviously not always a popular thing. And so in a small community, if you had good people that wanted to run, but they live in the wrong place, then they don't get to run, or you have two people willing to run, but they're both in the same ward, and then they can't both win.
Yeah.
No, I get the advantages of going to it, but I, I guess my question was what are the disadvantages?
It could be if you argue that your geographic area influences your decision.
And I think if we were a much larger city, that'd be a different story.
Yeah, I, I would agree.
I feel like where we're at, I don't think that.
Yeah, I think our interests are pretty common. Absolutely, absolutely common, yeah.
So that's.
But, but you could have somebody that might not think the same way.
Well, that's why we have a council.
I know, I, I know, but I, I'm, I think, I'm, I agree with you that it is getting hard to find people to run.
And I can attest to that. And then at least you don't have a limitation on finding the five best people. The other thing is, like, I, I haven't seen your elections, but when I was in another community, you would have people losing with twice as many votes as someone who won. Because of where they live.
Oh, exactly.
Right, so you have a district that, or ward in this case, if they were called districts, that has a lower population.
Right.
Turnout, not population, you're obviously all supposed to be.
We do have that.
Be done. The other thing, when you start to have your, um, census data. Census data, and then all of a sudden you have to, like, you know, wherever we're growing, if we're growing to the north. You know, all of a sudden the townhomes come and now you have to read. District and do new boundaries and all of a sudden somebody that lives on the edge is like bumped out and they automatically go up against somebody that's already on.
And we just, we just went through a re- redid drawing of our boundaries that way.
People were confused, and I think they're so confused about.
Yeah.
I would think it'd be easier on an election too.
And I can, I, uh, you know, I just thought of an advantage in my own mind here that, you know. As a voter myself, I come in and uh, I can only vote for people in my ward. And I'd be able to vote for everybody in the city at that point if we did it at large. What's that?
The top vote getters always are all the winner.
Right.
Cause like I said, if less people vote in Adams District, the person against you could. Lose and have more votes than someone in another one.
It's it's difficult to find someone who is willing to stand in front of the target during a dark tournament.
Exactly. So again, if the council is at least favorable to have that conversation, then I think we want to invest in. Some conversation with specific legal counsel. That's not what Justin does as our codification company. And if you're favorable to that, then we would get the official. Do we want to go to wa- to get rid of the wards? And if so, what does that take? And then the other conversation would be, does it make sense for the mayor's term to be the same number of years as council?
And we can just do the one by resolution and need a referendum for the other?
Ordinance and res- ordinance and referendums. Is what at least it appears to be. And then, you know, somebody has to come forward with the petition, so if the council thought, or you could find. An interested party that would be willing to do it, but you'd have to find out like. How many signatures do they need? And then it's up to the people if they think it's better to have. If if the final decision is a referendum, then it would be up to the people to decide if it's two or four for the mayor. And obviously, it's the same thing. There's value, you know, on both sides. I think most people that would probably say it's better to have a four-year term is that by the time you're. Getting accustomed to being the mayor, you're ready to. Hang it up.
And and one year in, you gotta start, have to start looking at reelection and. With one year in, you can't possibly know the second year you learn, we learned the most.
The default in Iowa is two years. Choose as a community to vote for. So that's, nobody's ever done that.
So two years is the, there are not many that do four years, is what you're saying?
There's actually quite a few that do four years.
I think there is. It's just that the default that you get, if you don't make a conscious choice to do something different, is two years.
So we have to wait to a normal election cycle to make that?
Again, that's where I, we'd have to go look. You know, does that mean that if Sean runs again, that we have to do that and then she still gets a two-year and on the same ballot a year from now we do? Is it two or four and then two years later is when you go into the four?
But she can't vote, so.
Yeah, I can't vote.
She can't vote on the issue.
But and just go down the referendum if it was one. No, I'm just saying, unless there's another election prior to the.
No, I I understand what you're saying. Yeah, I get it. I get it. But I don't, I I really don't understand what that would affect at this point.
I think both would warrant further discussion, in my opinion.
Yeah.
It's just if you want to have legal counsel to have clear direction on what it takes, that's.
That would be nice to know, I think.
Unless everybody's like, eh, we want to leave it the same, don't worry about it. But at least if people are interested, I think we want to make sure we're clear on the rules. So everyone's interested in furthering the discussion.
Well, I mean.
I'm in.
Yeah.
But I'm, yeah, I I'd like.
Then we'll get legal counsel for both. Sound good?
I do like the fact that you put these questions for the chapters. These are the ones from Justin.
Yes, so that's what he's gonna do with each chunk you're gonna get. We have to answer these questions.
So maybe we do need to go through these.
I don't know that, again, like if it makes sense that we're getting them.
Get there.
Again, my goal is.
I know. I mean, do people feel comfortable looking through these, looking at the questions, looking through each ordinance? And if there's something that you're wanting to make a change to, that you talk with Lisa or me about it?
Well, the other thing is, either way, I'm gonna have to look at these, but yeah, you know, we're starting this process. We gotta get on the cycle and he just got them to me.
I just like to say, I just read these today. I haven't had time to look at the complete, it's probably like read until I further um. Investigate it because I.
Can you do that over the next two weeks?
Well, he's gonna give us only a chunk once a month.
Okay.
So if you think about it, like we put it on this month and then as long as you're willing to. Talk about it at every meeting, we can like, see if anybody has any questions and then bring it up at the next meeting.
So we can just address this by saying, well, yeah, I'd like to talk about this and I'd like to talk about that. We don't have to address every single thing in a public forum.
But I think we definitely do need more time because.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I I don't want to talk about this now. We'd be on my, and you know, I'm nice to stuff on here that we just got done talking about, like, like who can sign checks.
Exactly.
I mean, we just got done going over that.
And again, because I wanted to pack it out, I will, I can also go through these and then I'll come back in two weeks and say these are my recommendations of how we're answering the question.
I would like to see that, because your recommendations do with your experience would be beneficial to us if we're not. Could be to all the.
Right, and other staff.
Yeah, whatever is relevant.
Staff that are relevant to those particular chapters and reports and commissions. I do think we need to look at the mayor and council term information and wage information. It is very outdated.
We've seen what we pay elected officials?
Yes. Um, and we can get that information from near neighboring communities, what they've done.
Again, if you change that in the recodification, then. Everybody gets the new, if you were to up it, then you get your new wage the next time you get reelected.
Yes.
So that even if you're voting, like that's always important, so you're not voting and giving yourself a raise until someone elects you again. They didn't agree with you.
Fair enough.
Correct.
But if you get it done in the cycle prior to the November twenty five elections. Most communities unfortunately kind of leave them alone for a long time because it feels funny to give yourself a raise. But, and most people aren't obviously doing it because of the money, but there's some level of love that it's still a commitment. And it still takes you away from something else that you're doing. So let's just move on to the next item and like, if everybody's okay, even though we'll get new chapters every month. That we'll keep it on both meetings and then I'll start. I'll make sure that.
Would it be worth having a working session before we have a regular council meeting to discuss them at that point?
That was gonna be my suggestion, maybe.
Conversation and then we can vote on them in the council meeting.
Wanting to come earlier, that's fine. What time can everybody get here? What do you do for your work sessions when you have five thirty?
But at the same time, we cannot wait until the work session to start discussing these or thinking about these.
You have to come prepared. Come to the work session ready to discuss them.
To Sharon's point is that I'm gonna say to him, now go get twenty six through whatever ready. So then you're not getting those in the packet, you're gonna get those right away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have a good chunk before. We'll put it in the packet again for the public's sake. But you'll get your next chunk. It's just starting it to get on a cycle.
I'd like this process because therefore, every council member has a say in every ordinance and the updates to it.
And I've already, like Planning and Zoning knows that we want input from them on zoning. Um, I'll obviously have recommendations on certain things.
Yes.
Everybody that has department head responsibilities has already been asked to start looking at whatever chapters are relevant.
So you're going to consult with them before you make your recommendations? And then we'll bring in our questions and then we'll go over there, correct?
So we'll discuss them at the work session and then vote on them and.
Brian said to have a work session maybe before our next council meeting to start at like four thirty. Can we do it in an hour?
I would think so.
I think as long as we all do our homework.
So we do our homework. All right, I like that idea. So I'll do a work session next time at four thirty, if that works with Adam.
Yeah.
Does that work for you, John? Okay.
We're uh, we're gonna do the city hall?
Yep.
No, we'll do it here.
Yeah, just so we can go right into the council meeting. All right. Did we discuss that enough? All right, number nineteen. Uh, consideration to send a letter to the Montgomery County Board or Planning and Zoning Commission. Regarding wind and renewable energy regulations. So it was my understanding that the county's Planning and Zoning Commission. Was meeting today. I think they were also approving the their comp plan for the county or reviewing it. Um, but they, my understanding is they were considering a potential moratorium on wind for the whole county. And I did send them a letter just asking for them to consider tabling that decision. Until I had an opportunity to speak to the full council. And to talk with my fellow mayors and the other communities for them to also discuss it at their council meetings, if it was of relevance to them. Um, the reason I think that it needs to be considered is because. As we see the funds for economic development getting tighter and tighter. Mid-American Energy is going to be, they they want to be a hundred percent renewables by twenty thirty. They're gonna continue to put in wind and solar. And they do then pay a pay a a fee back to the counties. Like in Adams County, that county funding then that comes in from wind and solar. Is what they use to help fund their economic development organization. In the tune of three or four times what we have been doing for M C D C when we started it. Which when we started it, the city and the county were both contributing fifty thousand dollars each. And we're down to fifteen thousand each. So I'm just saying. I think that it's worthy of the city council's decisions across the county. To discuss whether this is something that that you all want to take some type of a formal statement on.
Well, you know, the, like, like you mentioned, the. Renewable energy is such a huge source of revenue right now, uh, and with the demographic. And Montgomery County being what it is, uh, and you know. The city of Red Oak has the majority of the population of the county. That being said, any kind of moratorium against winter energy or solar energy is gonna affect the people within the city limits. Of Red Oak more, you know, disproportionately than anybody that lives in unincorporated areas, even though. Those are the people that are gonna provide the property and and the space for those renewables. Uh, the people of the city of Red Oak are gonna be more uh, either. Uh, positively or adversely affected by whatever decision the county makes at this point, so. I really feel like our input should be of some value to them. I, you know, whatever point they decide to make their decision.
No, I'd agree with what Brian said. I'm sorry, I'd agree with you, yes.
I've seen, I've seen windmills where I grew up, windmills are all over. It did bring in some really good jobs to people.
Yes, it does.
Flip side of it, when you talk about aesthetics, looking into. The horizon at night and you're starting to see red blinking lights and I, that is not a pretty sight.
There's every one on every grain elevator in the state of Iowa.
So I mean, it's just, I I I know like, some people don't like them's aesthetics. Uh, there's also some noise pollution that go with them. Uh, but to me, I, it it does bring in some good jobs.
So I, so I stay under one in a camper. When I go help my brother farm, he has four of them on his farm. Uh, you know, there there's less noise with one of those windmills than there is with a with a fifty-foot pine tree. In the wind. That being said, you know, there's no dead birds laying around them. I've slept under them for months and I haven't, well, I mean, I don't think I have any damage from it, but you know, that's probably.
No, I know, and but that's some people's concerns.
And, you know.
That will hear, but I.
Every cell tower, every radio tower, every grain elevator has a red blinking light on, I'm sorry.
No, but they do bring in some good jobs.
And and huge revenues for the counties that they sit in and huge revenues for the people that provide the the property to put them on.
And Mid-American Energy owns the certified site. Um, and we know, I know that solar is gonna be going into Mills County, a significant amount of solar. So again, Mills County will benefit from that and then their economic development entities benefit from that, so. I just think it's really worth. Your thoughts on on that. And um, while it may or may not be a moot point, depending on what their Planning and Zoning Commission did tonight, that will be a recommendation. They're still talking.
Updates here, the Red Oak City Council.
Okay.
East Coast depend upon the energy from these windmills to survive. Simply because they don't like the looks of it. They won't put them up in their own backyard. Just like they depend on the farmer to go bust his ass to feed them. It's it's ironic that. The Midwest is getting loaded down. People in big, big cities are sitting back wanting more for nothing.
I was a proponent for wind energy in Nebraska, which is the public power state. And that was while O P B D and M P P D. Were not in favor of it because they were concerned about how it was gonna affect their bottom line. But in the long run, they ended up making the investment into their own wind farms, which is what has helped all of those rural communities in those areas. So areas where they were seeing huge decline of population, as you said, it actually created some good jobs and. And it also spurred other types of industry, so.
In my experience with, my experience with the 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 company. That I'm familiar with up in Hamilton County. Uh, they do an excellent job of maintaining all the roads around their wind farms and. Go above and beyond what the county would actually require them to do, um, just to be a good neighbor.
So if I were to do a letter, what would your recommendation be that it says? And this could be a letter either to Planning and Zoning if they don't take action. But they would make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, so one way or another, the letter would either be to the Planning and Zoning or the Board of Supervisors.
I would link to both, if you're gonna write a letter, it's just, do you agree on your position that you don't want them to ban them?
I think that's.
That would be my thought.
Yeah.
Well, I I mean, it seems to me that that should be up to the people of Montgomery County and not just the, you know, to. For the their Planning and Zoning Board to just arbitrarily put a um, a moratorium out on on alternative energy without. Going to the public, I, to me, that seems wrong.
How other counties voted on that? They voted on this?
I I'm sorry, Sharon.
How do other counties do it?
I I don't know, but I know other counties make huge revenues from it.
Adams County.
I mean, how they approve it, I mean, do they just?
You mean if you're getting one? I would think there's some sort of special exception that you applied.
The county has to prove that they come into the county.
Contain it, contain.
They would define eligibility and things with.
How close can you put it to your property line if you, you know, you have forty acres and you put it right to the next door neighbors?
They have all sorts of uh, requirements and restrictions as to how close they can be to a road and even if the shadow can go across the road.
Like they have to be so far from the house so there's not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They would have, they would go before the county.
Is the code silent right now?
We we don't have, we don't have.
Yeah.
So it's either creating the rules or saying we're not playing.
Exactly, that's pretty.
Because you go into page, you go into Adam, they all have, you go to Missouri, right across the line and they're all over.
I mean, some of it is just really, do you. Renewable energies are not typically from, I mean, most cities that I've been in, we manage electric utilities. And so that's a little different than me having Red Oak, Red Oak having Mid-American, but. It really is if you believe that at some point, the resources that come out of this earth. Need to be, that are a limited resource, because it's not cheaper, like.
Well.
You know.
They're not, they're not gonna go away. The sun's not gonna stop shining and the wind's not gonna stop blowing.
And somebody's gonna get those revenues.
If you don't use renewable energies, because some people just don't value that and they believe that. Fuel, oil, coal, is gonna go on forever. And so if you believe, that's why it's a value. So when we invested. In one of the cities I worked in, we owned two wind turbines and we had a solar firm. And so about fifteen percent of our. Power that we generated came from renewables and that was on the Illinois side. So in Illinois, where they use a lot more power as a state. Municipalities and private. Uh, providers are forced to have some level of renewable energies because they use more. So if you believe, you know, like, and so it wasn't cheap. We spent a lot more money to put up wind turbines and solar farms. There was a lot of grant money on the Illinois side, but it was because you have to believe that we need to be using wind and sun to help. The future that is not when we're gonna be allowed.
And the point I'm making is Mid-American values renewables enough that they've made a statement that they will be a hundred percent renewable by twenty thirty.
That seems.
Well, I was eighty degrees in personal.
I think it's aggressive too. What's that?
I saw it was eighty degrees the first of November, so. Can't deny that.
Okay.
Does anyone, does anyone agree with? That we should ban them from the county? Out of the privately. Says that they have made changes which they will take a few weeks and it will be discussed again in December.
Is now that for just windmills, is that also for solar?
It was wind, it was wind tonight.
It was wind tonight, they approved a solar ordinance, uh, a couple of years ago. So they did approve an ordinance for solar.
So they're in favor of solar, just they're not so happy about the wind turbines.
Well, they're more invasive to people and if they're against it, you know, you don't.
Right.
So they did not ban them tonight.
Okay, so we've got another meeting if you want to wait that long, but.
Well, you know, I, I, you know, another thought I'm sitting here having is, you know, I don't care if you ban them in Montgomery County or not, you're still going to look at.
They're going to be.
I mean, unless you isolate yourself to the county of Montgomery, which I kind of doubt.
We can either take no action or I did put it on here that the council could. Uh, direct myself and the mayor to write a letter on behalf of the council saying that we believe from an economic development perspective that it is. There is benefit to creating a process to allow them, that doesn't mean that we're saying. Where, when and how, but that we don't want to see them banned.
I would say it's imperative.
Cause they're not going to be in our city.
I, I, I agree with that.
I agree.
Okay.
So then you could have a motion to that effect directing the mayor. So she said definitely, this is from Charlotte, no ban. And that she believes there will be some moving forward in December.
Well, I will move.
So I think it helps them because, you know, when people make unpopular decisions, as you know, if you believe that you want to support them in doing that. I think it is appropriate for you as elected officials in this municipality to say that. Cause that helps them justify why they may go against a few people who don't believe that that's.
Well, I will move as, that as a council, we direct the mayor and the city administrator to. Uh, draft a, uh, letter to the, uh, county commission and the county planning and zoning board. To state our position that we feel is imperative to the, uh, future economic development. Uh, and revenues from the, for the city of Red Oak that we allow wind energy.
I, I second.
Alright, so bills and heat brink. Did you catch that whole motion?
It's on recording.
That's true, you can catch it.
We got.
Alright, roll call.
Bradley.
Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Heat brink?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number twenty is just discussion of the action items from the league, uh, emergency management symposium. I had Lisa include a, uh, worksheet that we had in your packet. And I did share this with Brian Hammond because I couldn't even answer some of these questions. After having attended this last year, so I was pleased that we did this, so. Some of the questions that they asked and I just felt there may be answers that we just don't know, but I would like to have them. Um, and if not, I would like us to find the answers for them, so what warning systems are in place? To alert our community about imminent natural disasters, just so everyone knows, obviously, we've got the, um, our, our. Tornado siren, but we also have that, uh, text. Can't remember the name of it and Lisa, I'm not sure if, if you're aware, it's not two and one.
We use the Iowa wide statewide.
Yes, yes, that, that, then Brian, actually, I declare. An emergency, a snow emergency or whatever, and then he posts it out, so.
If you sign up.
Remember, it's automatic by code when we get two inches of. Automatic snow.
Yeah, it is, but they do, yeah. So, um. And then, um, you know, having that on there just so that, so that we've got it spelled out what we have and how people. It might be nice information to have in a welcome packet to newcomers or resident guide type thing of how to hear about. I mean, it could be a tornado, but it could be something that's a less imminent immediate, right? So, uh, with flooding coming or something like that, so. I think that would be interesting, um, when was your community's emergency operations plan last updated? I know we have a hazard mitigation plan, but I'm not certain of a emergency operation plan. Um, and this is work that the city of Red Oak has, uh, elected officials, so we have the emergency management ca- commission. That is put together, that is a, um, ordinance, state ordinance that creates that E M A. Or E M C, I guess, and the representatives on that are now the entire board of. Of supervisors, each mayor of each community, the sheriff and the E M A director. And we have a vote. Um, I do, the elected officials do designate a person to sit in if I'm not able to attend. However, only the mayor can vote on specific items, so that is the way the commissions are established by state ordinance, um. So, but this next one, so I do want to find out about that. Uh, number three, and, and when I talk about an emergency operation plan, that's. Just so we get new staff, we have new volunteers, making sure that everybody understands. What's happening, you know, with the clerk, where it makes a difference is the way that we have to track hours. If there is a disaster or if there's a flood, we have to track every single person. I did talk to Brian, um, they have it, so your, your driver's license. When you show up to whatever the command center is, um, you've got your driver's license, they scan it. Automatically records it so that it keeps track of people's hours, but all those hours are necessary to submit to FEMA for reimbursement. Every receipt of any type of thing is required, um, so there's just, there's a lot to it. To make sure that we're getting the maximized amount back from the state or from the feds, um, in case of something. Um, where are our community emergency shelters? I know the middle school used to be one.
Used to be one, I, I believe the high school still one.
So just again, some of this information just would be.
I believe we have some churches too.
I would, I would agree, you're probably right, and then who would manage them?
I think again, like some of these were just saying out loud and then.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just.
Get information.
And does your community have a trained public information officer? I mean, obviously, Lisa and I work. At, to some extent that way, but there are communities that have a P I O. Um, to coordinate media and public during an incident. Um, is your community, if we lost cellphone service in a disaster, how would we get information out to residents? And we had a number of communities there that were part of the duration.
I had that dream, it was terrible.
That's right, and so you have no cell phones, we don't realize how dependent we are on them until we don't have them.
She don't get to call each other, it was terrible.
That's why you have to know what the plan is, where's the command center, you know, where's all the staging areas where, you know, who, who are your insta-command? What are all of your different categories? And without it, it's chaos, so. Um, is your community, I'm sorry, what kind of emergency responders are available, trained and equipped, we're, we're good that way. Um, how would your city coordinate the, with neighboring municipalities, state agencies and federal authorities in the event of a natural disaster? Um, we're fortunate that our. Responders all work very closely with all the other communities, but there is the, um. Neighborly thing to do, like with Greenfield, I think they had a number of other communities that brought all their staff on board. So would we ever do that if we had Stanton or Emerson, would we just deploy that, that's actually, you know. A decision that we can make, um, when did our, our community last conduct a risk assessment? Of the most likely natural disasters to occur, so exercises. And I've asked to do exercises in the event, just so that we have to practice. Um, and most communities do an exercise every year, so I think that's something that we should value. Uh, what kind of financial resources are allocated for disasters? Many communities don't have anything and we don't. We haven't designated any money available in case something happens. And all of a sudden you need. A generator and or multiple generators and things, so these are just things to think about. Uh, what outreach, outreach programs are in place to educate our community residents about disaster preparedness and mitigation measures. The other thing is as soon as something happens, everybody's there. We know, like a tornado, all of a sudden the city yard is packed with people. Um, and how do we mitigate that?
You know, I think it would be beneficial for us to meet with Brian Hammond and see some of these, answer some of these questions because. You know, we're sitting here and we don't know the answers.
Exactly.
I mean.
And people are going to look to us.
I don't know what their role is and how broad it is because. It could be a real problem, I've seen other communities that have disaster, um. Exercises in place, you know, and they really helped, so.
No, I mean, we, we, we avoided a tornado that would really rip through town here. We've had everything in order to proceed and get people places where they need to be, you know, clean up. Do we even have anything in place?
Exactly.
Cause we could have had one here.
Yes, and then this other one, are there any vulnerable populations? Such as elderly, so all over, senior living homes, people with disabilities, national productions and others. Non-English speaking, can you imagine them not having a phone and being a non-English speaker? Um, and then low income residents and where would they go, where do they turn to? If, if the community will need special considerations in a disaster. When did your community last conduct a drill or exercise to test the disaster plans? Is there a comprehensive plan for post-disaster recovery? The other thing is, is we, we just have started going back through our hazard mitigation plan for the county and. Each city gets to a score. Uh, how high a risk certain things are, but then we also have to designate, how long will it take? Between the time of the incident to the announcement of it. And then how long would it take to recover? And many of these things could take months, um, so not, even though a tornado goes through right away. It's been how long since the tornado, well, we still don't have a city facility up, so. Yeah, we're closer. Um, are there partnerships and mutual aid agreements, again, our twenty eighty agreements? And they even talked about having those twenty eighty agreements with other neighboring counties. So that they're on call and ready to respond if we needed. Um, and then has our community implemented measures to mitigate the impacts of a changing climate? Considering its potential influence on the frequency and intensity of natural disasters. You know, we're seeing more and more flooding on the western side of the state. Whether or not that's going to ever reach us, let's hope not, um, but we are seeing it. Um, and how would your community assess and address mental health needs? Of our residents affected by the disaster, so. If you're Greenfield and most everyone loses their house. There's a whole lot of the mental side of all of this as, in, in addition to all of the physical, you know, amenity side of that. Um, plus if there's loss of life and all of that, so. I, I am at least on, uh, I am at least aware of being able to help our responders with. Some mental health, but I wouldn't know how to begin to do it for the entire community, so.
Well, I think again, I, I don't think that we're.
We're not answering.
I don't think that we don't have a plan, it's just really helping. Educate the council as to what the E M A has for the county and if there's anything that we need to do in specific. For Red Oak to add to that.
I think not only that, but I think citizens need to know. I mean, it's, you can have an emergency plan, but if you don't know what to do and the citizens don't know. What good is it?
Yeah, the first thing they're going to do is call K C S I. Or K M A or City Hall and we may or may not be there answering the phones. So, or the chamber, the chamber always gets a lot of calls too, so. Alright, I just wanted to be aware of that, I think your idea is. Have Brian maybe give us a presentation on some of that stuff, just so you, so we're all aware. Um, anything else with that? Number twenty one is discussion on the league's legislative advocacy kit, toolkit. It's a four-page document that I had Lisa include in this packet, um. Being on the board of directors for the League of Cities, I will have the strategic plan this Thursday. But we also have done a survey statewide. On the priorities of legislative bills that we are anticipating are coming forward in this legislative system cycle. Um, of those, the board then took and prioritized. And we not only prioritized based on the topic, but also on most. Doable, most, uh, um, able to be accomplished. Of those, there are three and I apologize, I meant to print that off before I came. One of them is, uh, is around police officers and, and being able to retain. Police officers and also looking at, um, how those. The retirement is structured for, for police officers, um, in union. And then the other one is sidewalks, the last legislature basically said that sidewalk repair and all of that. Puts all the liability back on the city. Um, and so it's looking at sidewalks and I know that, um, we do have some interest with our nuisance officer to establish some. Things with sidewalk repair and replacement. Um, and the other one, what is it? Oh, it is, uh, the public. The period of time, four days to twenty days for publishing for public notices, which it really doesn't impact us.
Say that again.
It's basically, we're going to try to, uh, encourage the, the legislature to just set a standard. Time period for, for publication.
I think they're talking about like when you have a public hearing, it changes the zoning code, the. Public hearings that we'll have next meeting, they have a four and twenty rule, they call it, so sometime between four and twenty days ahead of. Public hearing when it has to get in.
Yep, sometimes it's ten, some days it's twenty, and so what for communities like ours where we have a once a week publication. In the newspaper, it's hard to make that deadline date. Um, and so that's what they're pushing on those three, and then. The, the other piece is all about the budget and property taxes. And helping to educate our communities on the need for property taxes, that property taxes is not a bad horrible word. It actually is how you, we are funding our city services and so that is what it's paying for. Your property taxes pay for the city services. Um, and so people just need to have a better understanding of our property taxes and so we're coming up with some tools. That the city can use to educate people via Facebook, um, via PowerPoint to present at council, a number of things. Um, and then also more education on House File seven eighteen and, um. I think the city of Red Oak is going to be one of eight communities that are going to be featured in an upcoming. Issue, an entire issue is going to be dedicated to.
In a good way or a bad way?
Well, it's going to talk about how House File seven eighteen is going to impact Red Oak specifically. And the league staff will be coming to help us have a better understanding of that. That's coming up, I think that's all I have. And then just educating our, our legislators. Um, I know we've got an election tomorrow, so I'll just encourage everybody to get to vote, but. We really do need to have conversations with our legislative representatives. About how these things are impacting us and making sure they understand the decisions they're making are impacting the local municipalities. In ways that they're not necessarily understanding. So anyway, I can get that information to you all, I will. Okay. Uh, number twenty two is discussion on the budget and timeline. Um, the league is holding a budget workshop here in Red Oak on November fourteenth. I believe all of the staff, um, are registered for that. And then Lisa, do you have anything you want to share with regard to how you anticipate the budget timeline and how?
So I personally like to, I, I. I think some communities start talking about it in November and then it's just so, like you just don't have a lot of information, so my preference is it's a little bit more compacted. Um, where the head, head of time work is being done by staff, you know, we maybe get a little bit of direction from you. And then by the time we bring it to you that the department has to put their. And then by the time we bring it to you that the department heads have put their budget together, you know, Ashley and I would be working on. Something that we can then present to the council as opposed to. Um, you certainly can. Some communities will say each department head has to come before the council and. Um, at the beginning phases before we get it in, so I'm not sure what you're used to. Um, obviously, this group has done a couple of them together, but I'm happy to work with the staff and then get it into some workable. Place that we then present to the council.
Well, we've done the last two years is the council representatives that are liaisons to the certain departments have participated in the like. The first initial meeting with the department superintendent and assistant. And they just went through the current budget. Um, and then looked at, I think you, they do worksheets that kind of are their. List of wish haves, wish we could have or must haves. Um, and then we just helped to work one-on-one with them to determine whether those were things that made sense to share or not. And then if it goes on the capital improvement plan. So I guess I I think it's important that you guys have a say if you wanna be a part of that process again. Or if you want to just um.
Me um understand the budget better, and I think it's important that we be involved, so.
Let let me be clear, Mike. We'll spend a lot of time making sure you understand it. It's just. Are you comfortable with it? Department heads coming to me and we're putting a document together. So that you have the whole picture, because it's easy to sit with one department and say, yep, 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 that all looks great. And then how does that mix in with the whole pie?
No, I think that I think that's beneficial. And then we can sit down with you after you compile that and. Take a look at it.
So so Lisa, are you? Are you saying that that you'll take us as a council out of that initial loop, then we won't be involved in that process that like we were in in years past?
I'm not saying anything. I'm saying.
And I'm gonna put Chris on the spot, if you don't mind. So did you feel like that was beneficial to the process or not?
Haven't you guys seen? Yeah, um. Usually, the way I've done all the years I've been with the city is we present um our budget. We give our forms from the year before on our budgets. And then we are handed them and given X amount of time to fill out. And anything that we think we need to increase under budget lines. And then we turn those in and then last year, in the last few times, we've sat down with our council representative there with us.
And and once again, you know, you know, there's no right or wrong answer, but did you feel like that was?
No, I thought it worked fine. So that's kind of the way I've done it all years I've been with the city. Had a council representative there, so.
Yeah, that's different than if you want every department head to have to come before every council member together.
Yeah, no, that's not the way we've done it in the past.
Sit down at City Hall and.
Well, we do, you know, of course, we had to approve it.
Yeah, I mean, to me, you're gonna have numerous hearings. And believe me, I feel like. I spend a lot of time making sure that once I understand the ins and outs of everything and funds that are funding.
We're gonna be much more educated.
Thanks, Chris.
It's important to me that you understand. It's just making sure we're doing some of the preliminary work at the staff level so that. Kinda get it to a place where it's reasonable together.
I think there are some line items which you and I've discussed that are not representative in our budget. We need to just make sure we have in this next one.
And there's things that I don't know that are best practices we're doing right now, like. Like I've talked to the staff a little bit about, for example, sales tax, the lost. You spend money directly out of sales tax as opposed to saying. How much are we transferring to a department's budget? And so like R O O one, where you have police and fire that each get. Training money and equipment money, you spend it out of sales tax. So there's like things that I would like to see that we recommend. It's just where you put it. So in this case, you say you're gonna get fifty thousand dollars from. Sales tax to go into the fire budget, but it's spent out of the fire budget, so that the whole fire budget is the fire budget. Those are some things, and I think that's where some of it gets confusing when we've dealt with. Some of the deficits that we talked about two weeks ago where projects, you really have to understand what's funding what. So. Yeah, I would, my proposal would be like, we'll start talking about it after the first of the year. Obviously, you know, we used to have the end of March deadline. Now we have the end of April. You have to have your set public hearings separate from other things and.
And I could be wrong, but I'm guessing department heads are already kinda working on their. Sure, what's going on? Just guessing, yeah.
When does Max Bubby do?
It's not the same anymore, but the county has to send out their letters by March twentieth. So typically, you wanna get your first. Information by like March fifth, I think is what Ted Nelson had sent. Yeah, I don't, people don't usually like to talk about it over the holidays.
Yeah.
So wait until January, gives us January and February.
Anything else? All right, um, number twenty-three is the department reports. Um, Chris, thank you for your report. Um, both uh, street department and then the nuisance. A report, and this is like Taylor's first report, which. I was impressed with seeing how proactive he has been and his approach. Does anybody have any comments or thoughts on the street department that you wanna share or recognize or anything?
Thanks for doing the great job you guys do. It's thankless, never-ending job. We know that.
I will say it's it's awesome how well the departments are all working interdepartmentally and and they're a team and. I do have a question. Is the um nineteen seventeen mops in front of that on Hammond, will that be repaired anytime soon?
Actually, I met with a contractor today and went over that and Bluegrass Road.
Bluegrass Road.
Four or five other places.
Good deal, good deal.
I'm waiting on bids back tomorrow.
Okay. Good deal, all right. Um, and then the, as far as the uh, street department, you've, we've submitted all of that stuff. And we're working forward to get the building up hopefully before Christmas.
Yeah, I talked to the contractor last week and it sounds like. Uh, material for the sidewalls and the ropes and everywhere doors should be in. They're hoping by mid-November and their plans aren't right now, cause we're getting a little nervous about the weather. But they can possibly take and build a inner wall, two stalls in in the building, put a temporary wall in. And that way we can use part of the building while they're working on the structural, cause it won't come in until the end of November, first of December, the structural. So that's our plan right now, is possibly go temporary wall inside the building and be able to eat and. Be prepared for weather that way.
There ain't concrete work involved in that?
Nope, no, it's all structural steel.
Okay, good deal. All right, um, with regard to the nuisance report, is there anything else you wanted to add, Chris? I should ask while you're here.
Should do it.
Okay. Good deal. Um, as far as nuisance report, does anybody have any questions or thoughts?
We have five, five court cases.
I believe so. And he's trying to limit those by doing more proactive.
Good for him to get on top of that.
We have a hearing on Thursday that I'll go to him. I'll go with him to that. That's a property that's. Bleeding into the right of way with their things.
This is helpful to see like how many violations there are specific to specific items. So, I think that's helpful. Ready? Um, anything else with that? Number twenty-four administrative report.
Number thing, planning and zoning is ready to review the comp plan. So there's an ad in the paper. That'll be out this week for their November eighteenth meeting. So once they've gone through that process, they already got the copy so that they had a couple of weeks to review it. Not just when their packet comes out. So that has gone to them, and if you see the ad in the paper, that's what that is. Uh, the downtown assessment reminder, for those of you that can make it, it's Wednesday at one thirty and Friday at noon. I think the majority of you are able to meet. Um, I approved, since it wasn't a road closing, I didn't put it on your agenda, but the chamber on November twenty-ninth will be doing carriage rides. Around the square, so it's not a complete road closure, so we didn't bring it here for approval. Then on November thirtieth, they have the lighted fire truck rides, so that's kind of over that post Thanksgiving weekend. So that'll be there. Um, we will be redoing, I think I emailed everybody that, but we do have to redo a re-zoning. Of a property on Market Street, so you'll see that if anybody asks, it was. Inadvertently approved by resolution instead of an ordinance, which then negates the actions that you took last October. I have spoken to the property owner so that he understood we will not charge him another fee for the cost of a public hearing notice. I explained that he doesn't need to take time off of work to come and attend meetings again, that I'll kinda walk that process through because it was our. No, again, not purposeful, but our mistake. So you'll see that come. I think I have to wait till December, cause I didn't have enough time to get the ad to the paper for the November P and Z meeting. Uh, Ashley and I are meeting with FEMA tomorrow regarding um hopeful reimbursement for some of the things that the insurance company will not pay for. For the tornado. Um, we didn't get our original request for funding in on time, but Brian at EMA was able to. Request that we had a late submittal and they did approve that, so we're working with staff on what those costs are. At a minimum, we're hoping that we got our insurance deductible paid for. And that maybe there's some cost of employees' time for those first couple of days and equipment that. Ashley's been gathering that and we're meeting with them tomorrow. Um, we'll be starting union negotiations. Our contracts come up at the end of June. And so I'm working with the police union, who obviously has their representative to try and set some meetings up. If you do not get all of that submitted by March to the state, then you technically get an extension. And so we'll start working on that with them.
That's every year, I guess.
No, every, it was a three. You opened it up mid-contract, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a June thirty twenty-five expiration. Um, as I had explained to you that we were gonna try to be a little bit more aggressive with regard to delinquent water bills, and so. We have served the landlords uh or property owners of about fifteen parcels. Uh, we prepared the letters and instead of sending them certified mail, confirmed that a personal service. Is actually better and then there's no delay in the mail or somebody gets to refuse it, so. Um, the chief was willing to send officers, all the property owners lived in town, so over the weekend, everyone was served with those letters, which gave them ten days. These were letters that their water shut-off was not functional, therefore we can't come and shut your water off. They gave them ten days to make the repairs, or we will either show up with city staff or a plumber. To make those repairs. Um, in some cases, the delinquent bills were as high as thirteen hundred dollars. So we're hoping to. Get those repaired. Um, and then it was also made clear in that letter that due to the fact that uh in the case of those parcels, it, we listed the delinquent amount. And said that be forewarned that as soon as the shut-off is fixed, whether you do it or we do it, you will be shut off.
Were there um multiple parcels for one?
There was one landlord that had three and one that had two, so we served them one letter with well, separate letters listed which. So I'm curious to hear anything.
Good.
We did that. And then the other thing, if you recall, there was um conversations about doing a water main replacement on Oakwood Avenue. In between second and fourth, second and third. And so we sent out a letter from Clint and I to those people, we'll have an informational meeting with them on November thirteenth. That won't be a council meeting, that'll just be staff. Meeting with them, so the residents on that block on the north side were requesting a ten-foot easement. That's a super narrow right-of-way at thirty feet. Normally you'd have a wider right-of-way and have more space to be able to place all those pipes. Where they're not on top of each other. So we're hoping to get ten feet from the property owners on the north side. We invited the residents from the north and the south side. Obviously, we haven't asked the council to officially bid it out, but determining if you can get an easement. Actually dictates where we go with regard to the project, so.
It's just utility easement though. I mean, we just wanna put it in and bury it and out of sight again.
Correct. Obviously, then you're spending less money and not putting it in the road. And then again, because it's a narrow, you know, thirty feet is not a normal, a more common right-of-way would be forty or fifty feet. So when you only have that thirty feet, the the pipe itself would likely be two feet north of the current right-of-way line. So they all got a letter on the north side that said, please come to this meeting, and we're hoping for an easement on the south side. It just said comfort informational meeting. And then they all got a copy of the map that shows the plans that they can see. The right-of-way line where the current pipes are, or proposing to put the water pipe, and then where the template easement would be. I'm gonna be asking um our engineers at Snyder to try and go out there, you know, sometimes people don't really understand where. This line is and where the new line would be, and people think it's like in the middle of their house and. Not really accurate, so we're gonna ask them to stake that out before the meeting so people can see that. But in case you would get asked about it, I did have one resident already coming to me.
Our intention is to put all this. Somewhere besides.
In the case of this water main, it would be in the terrace, which would be, I don't think they have sidewalk there, so it would just be on the outside, north side of the curb. And then the last thing, um Beth Bonds, who we had contracted with to kinda help with our reports, was here this last weekend. Uh, and so her and I worked all day Saturday. Suzie was here kinda helping us run and. Find some things. So we did get some answers. We kinda got locked up by G Works where they don't let you. Make changes to a fiscal year that are out of. We had to send something in to them to try and get some of the journal entries that need to be made. Um, we did find a couple of things. That makes some sense. I think the trails we're gonna have to leave alone, if you remember, that was one of the. Things that we talked about using road use, but if, as the more we talked that through, if we. If we say that we're spending road use money in fiscal twenty-four for a project that was as old as eighteen or nineteen. All of a sudden, we're gonna have to show expenses, which we don't have, and so we thought we better rethink that before we do that. And then the last thing, there was a larger fund balance in the debt service that didn't really make sense to me. And I think what I'm hoping is that we've found a couple hundred thousand dollars in debt service. That looks like it may be as old as the nineteen ninety-six. Water bonds, and when you have revenue bonds, you're asked to have a reserve fund to cover the last year's payment. And it appears that back in, when I talked to Chip about it, I think the last payment was made in oh-six. And that money's been sitting there, so we're gonna research that a little bit more, and then I may come before the council to say that. That should get transferred back to water, since I confirmed that that debt is no longer existing. And then, you know, things like the Oakwood Avenue project or, you know, some of the water things we could use for that. The other thing that we found was, remember I had that, that it seemed like we were short in fire and ambulance, those payments. We weren't really clear on that, but what happened was when we were running the reports from fiscal twenty-four. The last grant that came in for the ambulances came in in July, so it doesn't show. It's gonna look like a deficit in fiscal twenty-four, but the money came in in fiscal twenty-five, so there was less money needed. Uh, out of one of the funds that we thought we had to transfer. It's just a fiscal twenty-four year, and so kinda making some progress on. Just getting some answers.
Um, had you had a chance to tell all of the council about the health insurance?
I think everybody got the email that our rates are going down eighteen percent. I was gonna have it, uh, which is about a savings of two hundred and forty thousand. Um. I was gonna put it on the council agenda for this time, but decided to wait and work on it a little bit more with Suzie, but. Uh, the union contracts kind of already dictate where the they land and the max amount that they spend on that. And so if they are not at their max, theirs would also go down. Um, the non-union people currently pay fifty-eight dollars. It used to be fifty dollars, so I'll likely come in two weeks and recommend we go back down to fifty. Just so that there's a small cost savings that we share with everybody if we're saving. You know, two hundred and forty, then a little bit of that could go to them. If you kinda look at an eighteen percent. You know, at fifty-eight dollars, somewhere around a ten-dollar reduction is twenty percent, so that eight dollars is kind of saying we cost show that with employees. And I think that's a good faith effort when it's a significant enough savings like that, but we would have the council vote on that in a couple of weeks. So that we get it done before we start doing their deductions for January. That was great news. We're also gonna have an all-employee meeting on November twentieth, just to go over. Some of the benefits that we have with everybody. It'll be mandatory if they're working, then we're gonna record it, and they'll be mandatory to watch the recording. We're gonna send a mailer home to spouses, so that if significant others or spouses wanna come, if they're the. Kinda head person in their families that do that, but we have this AM first. If you remember that, we have kind of this supplemental. Coverage where we pay on top of that, and it sounds like we are not being as successful as we should be with getting coverage for that. So I think we have to be more diligent about educating the employees on how to use it. Um, I don't believe that people understand that we have a teledoc system within our Walmart policy that's doctor on demand. Especially for young children or, you know, like simple things that you can get that and your deductive or your co-pay. Um, is the same, you submit your insurance to them and they cover that, but we're not confident that. People are aware of that. Um, we have a couple of people taking advantage of the YMCA memberships where we have employer deductions on your paycheck, which gives people a ten percent discount. And we have a couple of people participating, so we want to educate the staff about that. So we're going to have an all-employee.
And then the um post. City Hall.
Oh yeah, super fabulously successful day. Two twenty-yard dumpsters, one was filled with paper, one was filled with trash. Those were taken off-site on Monday. We accomplished a lot, um, just in the basement with three main things that we took out where we only need to keep five years and we had twenty. It was a hundred and fifty banker boxes that we were able to recycle the paper within it. Never be buying a banker box again, we kept a hundred and fifty of them. You ever see a banker's box on the list of bills? Um, so we did a great job with that, um, the mayor will be moving offices, so we were able to kind of readjust where file cabinets are. And uh, some of them went in the basement, uh, where we don't need to go down there a lot. We are going to be bringing in one of our. Assistant managers from the summer, who's going to meet with me on Wednesday to maybe try and do some painting at City Hall. Um, it's an inexpensive way to maybe kind of spruce it up, like we're even thinking of painting the entire lobby white. Just to kind of, you know, it's an inexpensive way for us to just make things look nicer, we'll start with the mayor's office before we bring her furniture in there. On the. Uh, on the other side of the building where she'll go. So we're going to look at that. Two more Fridays, remember we kind of said we'd report back, we don't need to be closed more than those two Fridays. We'll. Make sure that, but our focus right now is really just like what makes sense to be where and kind of more the fine tuning. We had a great response, the city departments all sent someone, I think on our nine AM on that day, we had fifteen employees show up. From all the different departments with a parade of boxes out to the dumpster. You know, so many hands makes lighter work at least, and that was great that everybody helped.
So the Fridays that you're going to be closed are not consecutive Fridays, they're.
Yes, every other. So this next Friday, the eighth will be one of them and then the twenty-second. And then I would say anything that we have to do after that, we'll be able to accomplish while we're open. But it was major progress and just again. Um, the other thing that we're kind of working on is. I think that we're super paper-heavy. Because I believe that people have believed, you know, in good faith, they thought that's what they needed to do. Um, so I reached out to the auditors, I don't need to give anybody an anxiety attack from like, we shouldn't keep copies of all this stuff, I want them to know from the. Okay, not to make those, and so we're going to make a list of. The kinds of things that I wouldn't commonly see a city retain in terms of records. Throughout the year and then we'll have a tele-virtual meeting with the auditors so that, obviously, it's mostly Suzie. Who's had that history, you know, Donna and Karen, Ashley and myself are all newer, and so just helping her feel good that. If I say you don't need to keep copies of all this stuff. You know, I've never seen binders like.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that we'll have a major. Reduction in the budget when it comes to paper and the copyrights, because there's a lot. But I don't want them to feel uncomfortable with that because I know that they have known no different but to retain all those copies and so. We'll work on that, just. Just, and I think the police department's gone through that process of thinking you have to keep three copies of something or four copies of something and you just. Whatever happens with the second and third copy, I've been throwing them away because. You just don't need them, as long as everyone, you know, ordinances.
And now if, if people are questioning or wanting to see a resolution, it's in a binder, easy to find. Same thing with ordinance updates, I think that you're putting those in there and a minutes book that's available and.
Right.
Everything is much more easily available than having to go through. All of our file cabinets to find, goes through three or four copies of every single resolution, so.
So again, I think it was while I know there wasn't unanimous support on closing City Hall and that there was concerns about that, we definitely. Um, it was beneficial that we had the ability to just have all hands on deck. And I think it was a successful day. We won't need staff coming from all the other departments, maybe a short amount of time where we call a couple of people in to help with some muscle. Jobs, but we should be fine and. It really did make it be more effective to just do it quickly. You know, we checked the voicemail throughout the day, there were a couple, like one guy needed a building permit, we let him in, he kind of came to the back door, I was working with JEO and. Getting their final plot with Woodland Hills, just kind of had him come to the back door, but in terms of just the general public, it didn't seem like there was any. Major trauma from somebody not giving in, we had a note on the door, we had posted it on Facebook, so two more Fridays and. As you had asked, will we be able to get it done, we'll, we will not recommend any other closures.
And hey, I found the gavel so I can keep you guys in order, I mean, just saying.
Hidden in the closet.
Was it just for that?
And you can walk in it, the closet.
Super.
That's also very nice. Awesome. Excellent work, oh, I know there's a whole lot more, but that's a good recap, that's, that's a pretty good recap, you've had some very good meetings the last few weeks, so. Um, my report I just included in the packet, again, just meetings that I've attended, um. And then the grant, I will comment that the community-wide EPA assessment grant with TerraCon. That is actually submitted, going to be submitted here in the next few days, um, through the government portal. Um, so that's almost ready to go in, and then I just commented on some upcoming meetings, um. See if there's anything. Uh, there will be, just FYI, uh, there's going to be. An open house for the nineteen seventeen loss. Uh, believe it's going to be December thirteenth, I won't have the details for you, it's going to be in the afternoon, Friday the thirteenth. I thought about that today. Um, and then there'll also be on Saturday, I think they're going to have an open house for the community, so uh, there'll be two days. The first one's going to be more for dignitaries, the state, EPA is going to come out and some others, um, but then on Saturday it'll be for the community. Lisa and I did go look at it today, uh, it is coming along quite nicely, I think they're going to be able to have it all completed. Um, I think they're letting people move in on December first. So it just kept getting moved because of the switchgear not being here, but they did get that. Yes, so I know of, they have nine applications of which the people have paid their deposit. And of those nine, three are former alumni that are coming back to the area from out of state.
That's great.
So, and then the other six are people that from within the community, and I think they said they have two more applications that they just got this weekend. So I think now that they can kind of designate what day move-in is going to be and they're. Being a little bit more forthright with that date, I think you're going to see more people. They're very nice, I mean, they're, they're very spacious and the three bedrooms are huge. So they look really great, even from when we saw them last, they've painted on, you know, and they've had to. Keep the clocks and the chalkboards and the, any storage shelving, anything that was, that was. A part of the historic building had to remain or be replaced with something similar, so that's all there.
Are they going to have the shop, old shop area? Because that was one of the last.
Oh yeah, it's already, it's, it's pretty much done, the music room and all of those are pretty much, yep. The biggie is the. If there's only one. The one room that's the most, the handicap room, I think. That was the most, um. You know, and we did talk about ways that they could still potentially raise some funds if there were people that wanted to have naming rights. To a room or something, there might be an opportunity for people, so.
Where's everybody going to park? They get one parking stall assigned. I think they were almost able to park them off-site and then their second spot would be. On the street.
And right now it's only one adult per unit, they said, so.
There's no two family.
Yeah, no, two adults per.
Yeah, two, there is not two adults.
Yeah.
And just so people are interested, I think it was. There's one, two and three bedrooms, the three bedroom is like a thousand fifty dollars for rent and then the one bedrooms are. Seven fifty and the two-bedroom was nine something, so people are interested. Certainly a nice facility if. People need rental.
And then they have this uh rental or a. Storage unit in the basement. Kind of another closet that they could have to put like their Christmas ornaments and tree and. Stuff like that in, so there is a little bit of storage.
For their own utility. Their own electric and then included in your rent is water and sewer.
Water and sewer, okay. Yes, and it's, there's no gas. Uh, trash would be, I don't. I think they're just going to.
Dumpster.
Can't remember what I was going to say, okay. Good deal, um, I think I mentioned the strategic planning session for the league is Thursday. Um, the. We invited a nice number of people to come participate in the downtown assessment, so I think that'll be great, those focus groups will be. Um, we'll have the IDA people here Wednesday morning taking a community tour with the Sweta bus. And then uh, we'll do a walking tour, we are going to get to look at a couple of different buildings, we're going to have lunch, then we'll have. Um, those focus groups throughout the rest of Wednesday, um, focus groups on Thursday morning. Um, and then they will have some time alone Thursday afternoon, I believe, and then Friday morning, then the luncheon. That we have probably what, a hundred people? Okay. Okay, fifty or so, um, that will be at that and that will be a report basically out from them and then they'll go back. And they'll put together and finalize the full report, which we probably won't get for a couple of months, three months or so, about quarterly. Um. Also, the National Rural Economic Developers Association Conference, it moves all over the country and it will actually be in Omaha this year. Um, this is rural development, basically rural economic developers, tele-cooperatives or telecommunications cooperatives. And uh, rural electric cooperatives. That are all members of that from all over the country, um, so that will be in Omaha. And um, then I met Desi Payne as a motivational speaker, she's going to be coming to the. High school or the, yeah, to the high school to speak to, um, actually it's seventh and eighth graders, not ninth, eighth and ninth graders. Uh, so that'll be. A good session on their value and their resiliency. Um. I think that's pretty much it. City council reports. Adam.
Nothing.
Okay, John.
Nope.
Tim.
Uh, it's an M C D C meetings, Lakin Foundation meetings, and then I went to the hundred-year celebration at the Country Club.
Birthday, happy birthday, I forgot.
Yeah, okay.
They celebrated you, correct? Brian.
Foundation meeting and then I also did uh, uh, county supervisors meeting.
Okay. Sure.
I also went to the Lakin meeting with five-one-eight, which was very informative, I thought. Um. Also, um, M C D C meeting with the website today and. No, and Steve on that. I attended uh, the anniversary party and he'll put it together for the country club, so we had a great turnout, a hundred people. Uh, it was a program uh, for the history of the country club, which Bo Bowie or Bill Bowie and Bob Bowie. Uh, had been working on for six years. And it was wonderful, and uh, so they're going to continue working on that because it was through nineteen seventy-five, so there's a lot more. Updane to do, but it was a great presentation and it was a wonderful evening for. People that came from out of town and every place, so that was great, good. And then also, I just want to mention that the cross-country meet, I went to the ceremony. And Adam's son, uh, about eleven, the meet.
Yep.
And. I felt bad for your son, you look so pale, but you did a great job, we watched them and so. You should be very proud because they went to state and um, they did a good job there too. So, thank you.
Did you say he placed ten?
Uh, eleventh here, Banegras was tenth, that was at districts, so he had to be in the top fifteen in order to go to state.
I see.
And it was with some big schools too.
That's a big deal.
That's it, yes, it's a huge deal, that's great. Um, just a reminder to the extravaganza. Yeah.
And where's the bathroom? There's the chambers.
If you want to go, too bad you can't go. All right, number twenty-seven, discuss items for upcoming agenda.
Are we going to talk about recycling?
Recycling and trash.
We probably should. Yeah, I just have to kind of get something together, I did meet with. Uh, Lynette, you know, obviously she had a lot of questions and that with her, just to kind of explain. You know, we want to do what we can to. Provide the service with a local holler, but we have to decide what it is that we want to, what we want to ask for. As a service to provide to the community and then we'd be in touch with her, I said, I thought that this would be a goal for. Getting it finalized over the winter so that we could start something most likely in the spring.
Okay.
And I didn't, but I just need to get some more thoughts in and document.
Okay. Do we want to, would, would it be feasible to have, just get their thoughts on during that work session? Or just.
I mean, it's really just, are you going to write it from a. Local holler where they don't have arms and toters, or are we going to say that we want that, I think that's really the biggest thing.
The big thing, okay, or at least maybe we can clarify that during a work session, perfect. Um, ARPA-wise, do we have, uh, I know we have to have the. Like contracts for all the remaining ARPA funds, do we know if we've got all of that?
I think it's mostly all spent when you did the stuff that you've done, but.
I think so, I think so, but I just want to make sure we're. Okay with that. Um, okay.
What are we going to talk about, putting a security system downtown?
Camera moving on the square. Yeah.
We talked to Elaine a little bit about that today.
I would think that has to be a budgeted item, because it's not cheap, but it would be part of the budget.
For future discussion.
Yeah.
We just need to consider that for next year for budget.
One of the things that I kind of have had a few conversations with community people is. How do we handle different people's ideas of things they want to do?
Yes.
That affect like city properties and. So like one thing is the security cameras, I think people say they want speakers and a sound system downtown, that they want a roof over the. Band stage, that they need a roof over the rock, that they want the alleyway between Fountain Square and Montgomery County Courthouse to be. Kind of fancied up and beautified and, and how do we make sure that as each person has those goals and priorities? How do we make sure that everybody isn't just asking everybody to donate to causes that are part of our. Property and things that we provide and not. Making too many demands on the community and businesses, just because it's important to you, and so. We had some good discussions about, but if people are willing to go and fundraise, shouldn't they be allowed to, and I said. I guess if it's their own deal, but when it's the city's deal and you're on our behalf, I think. Council kind of has to give you a blessing before. Which, which thing is it, because just, just for me, I heard five things that all affect the square.
Yeah.
And they probably can't all be done.
So just have me to process so that people bring those to you and you bring those to the council.
Or then it's important with budget time to say, okay. There's a lot of different things, but. I don't, it's hard. Because as we all know, like, all of our businesses in our community get. Probably requests. Every, every day, every, you know, and we can't just say it's okay to just go ask everybody for everything. So. Or at least I don't think we should, that's.
And meanwhile, we need to have a say in things that are being done on our properties.
Just to give my best.
Yes. Okay, all right, with the all items completed, I will adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-eight. Seven thirty-eight.
Oh boy. I'll take you off your hands, counsel.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Adam.
You have a good one.
Yeah.
Where are you going though?
I forgot to fair warning you. They're long.
Vocal politics class. Ah, or that was one of my requirements, I have to go.
Do I have to sign up on anything?
Never down to a city council meeting.